Well, that's tall.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. It's called the Grand Forks City Council's Committee of the Whole for, it is Monday, February, what is the date today?
It's the 12th.
12, thank you. Monday, February 12th, under item one, call to order, 1.1, welcome and roll call.
Weigel.
Here.
Osowski.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Lunskey. Cavami.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Veen, we have a call.
Great. Thanks, everyone. Under item two, updates and informational items, 2.1, PSAP update, BNSF $10,000 in training space. Ms. Leyes, good evening.
Good evening, members of the committee. I'm here on two updates. The first one is a grant that we received from Burlington Northern Santa Fe. Part of our mission is always to deliver exceptional communications, and a key component to that is ensuring redundancies within our network and ensuring reliable communications with our first responders in the field. Last year, we applied for a grant through Burlington Northern Santa Fe and were awarded $10,000 for a project for redundant communication system for them. This is going to help fund two key components. It's going to provide a backup secure Internet resource that we could use in the event of a failure or if we ever had to go to our backup PSAP. And the second component would consist of two radio councilets. So if the statewide radio network were to go down, it would allow us to remain in contact with our responders in the field. This funding is going to cover 50% of the total cost of the project of $21,000, and this has already been accounted for in the 2024 budget. And we just would like to thank Burlington Northern Santa Fe for their support of public safety. Grand Forks contains a rail yard and over 100 miles of railway, railway throughout our county, and we do work with them on many incidents with our other public safety partners. So we just wanted to thank them for that. And the other update that we have is in regards to space. As we continue to grow and expand, providing a comprehensive work environment for our training program is very important for their development and growth, and that's something that we've been working on over the past year. And we've been working very closely with Todd Fieland, Brandon Basefugan, and Mayor Bochensky, and they were able to work with us, and we now have a dedicated training space located in City Hall Room A102, which we just finished up moving into. And so this training space has a couple different components. We have work councils down there, so not only are they able to have a classroom setting, but it's actual role-playing that they'll be able to do. And in addition to that, not just for new hires, we will use it for ongoing continuing education, much like our law and fire, public safety partners, we have continuing education recertification that we need to do throughout the year. So we're very excited about the opportunity to have some dedicated space to utilize this for our new hires and for those that we currently have on our team. And we would like to extend our gratitude to all that supported this and what it took to make it successful. And I stand for any questions on those two topics.
Let the record show that Mr. Veen has joined the meeting as well. Any questions or comments, Ms. Leyes? Thank you. Great presentation.
Thank you.
So moving right along, item three, discussion items, 3.1, award of RFP for CAD system.
Thank you. As a public safety answering point, we're always striving to not only meet our current needs now with the technology, but for future next-gen 911. And at the heart of every PSAP is a computer-aided dispatch system, or as we call it, CAD. It really truly is the heartbeat of everything that we do and how we relate with our responders in the field. And the benefits of a well-equipped system not only meet next-gen needs, but it allows for us to all work seamlessly together. Our current CAD system was purchased in 2016, and as time has progressed, we've seen issues and errors with it as far as instability, inconsistencies with data, and then just overall performance issues. So back in May, we started the process, reached out to a lot of vendors. I think in May alone, we did 10 demos. And then following that, the PSAP team, we issued a RFP in November for a multi-jurisdictional CAD system that would replace this one. And with that RFP, we received six vendor responses and did further presentations and demonstrations with these selected vendors. And throughout the whole process, it was the PSAP department, but we also brought in like our stakeholders. So police, fire, EMS agencies were all invited through this to make sure their feedback was given. The proposals were evaluated based on a best value criteria to make sure we were gaining a well-balanced system, implementation, project, the system itself, redundancy, as we just talked about, is very important for us, support, costs, and of course, references. We did a lot of questioning with references to make sure the system worked as the way we're being shown in demos. Each vendor was also scored on minimum function requirements, and this was all presented to our board. And there were two top vendors that came forth. One was 365 Labs, and the other was Central Square Technologies. The top vendor, 365 Labs, is a cloud-native software, and by cloud-native, not just a software that works on the Internet, but it's actually built in the cloud. So think of going from a flip phone to a smartphone. That's the type of technology that we're talking about with 365 Labs. It's an app that interfaces with other systems. It's very feature-rich, and it does utilize artificial intelligence as well throughout the system. Based on the scores and other information, the 911 Authority Board recommended that 365 Labs was the best fit for our needs. And in the staff report, there's also the breakdown of the costs outlined. The funding for this project will come from the 2105 E911 fees, which has been budgeted in the 2024 budget. And if approved, we would look, would work very closely with that company through contract negotiations to make sure milestones were set, and as we have other, like the police department, fire is on board, we would work with them to combine or reduce costs, as there would be multiple agencies coming on board. And as 365 provides the best fit for our needs, and we would also like to recognize Central Square as a potential option in the event contractual needs are not met. At this time, I stand for any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Leyes? Ms. Osowski?
Do you guys have to look for a new CAD system about every 10 years, or?
It really depends on the system, as with any technology, whether that system is moving forth with the needs of where we're at. Part of what we're seeing is this system isn't moving towards, it hasn't grown or changed anything in the program.
Our current system?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Weber, 911 fees, that's been a bit unreliable or changing over the last 10 years or so. Has that kind of evened out now?
It has, yes. Yep. The 911 fees have been pretty stable the last few years.
I'll move approval.
Okay.
There's a motion by Weber, second by Osowski. Is there a lot of data that has to be ported over from the current system to the new system?
There, we will be working to see which fields that the agencies need to bring forth into that system. There's the option to work with IT where that data can just live, live and be, reports can be driven through instead of converted over as well.
I see.
So there's a couple different options that we may look at to reduce those costs as well.
Knowing that implementing a legacy software system like this, that's organization-wide, is very difficult to do. Are all of your employees on board and looking forward to a new system? Because if everyone's not on board, it becomes very difficult.
I can guarantee that all my employees are looking forward to a new CAD system.
That's great.
Just with the issues that we have daily.
Good. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign, which carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 32, thank you, Ms. Leyes. Special Operations Group, anyone have a problem putting UND back into the Special Operations Group?
All move in favor.
Moved by Weber. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Veen, thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Chief, something you want to add?
No, I just say I must have wowed you with my testimony, so I appreciate the quick vote. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Item 3.3, 2024 CDBG program. Ms. Richards, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. As you may recall, I was here in December to get your approval to allocate funds with the budget shown below for both the CDBG and CSG, your Community Services Grant Program. In the last cycle, you approved funding for the CSG program, and so tonight, we're here to talk about CDBG. The process that you approved in December was to allocate $725,000 to a competitive process. We received applications on the deadline of January 10th totaling $2.5 million approximately, eight applications. Those are summarized on the last page of your staff report. As usual, the Community Advisory Committee met. They held a public hearing on the city's CDBG program, and following applicant presentations, they ranked the eight applications that were received. They typically go through a yes-no vote, which eliminated three of the eight, and so the five applications that were remaining were ranked in priority order, and those are shown on the second page of your staff report. This year, we had kind of a added emphasis on timely expenditure as a criteria for reviewing those applications. While we're underway now, we've had delays on big projects for the last two years, and so we have failed to meet HUD's timely expenditure requirements. So it's pretty urgent that in 2024, we spend money quickly. And so that was a factor in the funding recommendations for 2024 projects. The funding recommendations follow the Community Advisory Committee rankings fairly closely, and the CAC does support these. Highest ranking project was security upgrades at Northland's Rescue Mission. Recommend full funding of $63,000 for that. Prairie Harvest Mental Health submitted a request for elevator upgrades at two of their facilities. The recommendation is to fully fund one of those. It was the smallest, but also the most likely to actually be completed. And then the third funding recommendation is for $630,000 to the Housing Authority for acquisition of approximately five-and-a-half-acre site for construction of a 42-to-50-unit affordable housing development. And then finally, we have as a second-tier recommendation, this would be if additional funding, kind of unanticipated funding, materializes, up to $50,000 to the Community Land Trust to acquire housing for resale to low-to-moderate-income home buyers. So again, the request is for you to basically give feedback on these funding recommendations tonight. On March 18th, there would be a public hearing for you to take final action, and then those projects basically become the core of our 2024 annual action plan. If you have any questions on the big-ticket item of the site acquisition, we have Terry Hanson from the Housing Authority here, and I'm certainly willing to stand for any questions as well.
Questions, Ms. Osowski? Yes.
Yeah, was Prairie Harvest, were they the ones who, like, asked for money, and then they asked to, for us to, like, redesignate it to help with their staffing needs?
Oh, correct. That was, two to three years ago, they were awarded $10,000 for, this was during COVID, to do some entry upgrades. It basically became unaffordable for them to do that, and so.
Did we let them keep that money?
Yes, council did approve an amendment to basically convert that from bricks and mortar to operating funds.
So now they're back asking for money again for the same project that we already gave them some money for?
This is a different project. That request that we converted to operating funds was for entryway upgrades to their facility on North Third Street. This is for elevator improvements for their Stern Place property over on University Avenue.
Okay. And who else funds the Grand Forks Housing Authority?
Well, they get a lot of HUD dollars for operations. This project would be, the CDBG money would go for site acquisition. This would get the site, then there would be a lot of fundraising. I presume the majority of the project would be funded with low-income housing tax credits, but Mr. Hanson could answer that more clearly than I.
I move approval.
Moved by Osowski.
I'll second.
Second by Weber.
If I may quickly.
Yes, sir. Over many years, there have been millions of dollars in federal dollars brought in to support low-income and senior populations in different parts of our town. It's a cumbersome, a long and complicated process. One might even say an administrative nightmare at times.
I would say that, yes.
Thanks. Thanks for all of your work shepherding those dollars into our community and for the benefits that have been derived from them.
Thank you, Mr. Weber.
Further comments or accolades? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Richards. Item 34, bid award for Project 848902, District 605, sanitary sewer for Highway 81 and associated area Phase 2. Mr. Danielson.
Thank you, President Sandy, members of the committee. So this is a project that's been in front of you guys a handful of times already. This is the Phase 2 of the sanitary buildout up in the recently annexed Highway 81 area. This project is expected to install the collector's sanitary sewer along 27th Avenue in that area, a small piece of what's going to be the ultimately full buildout up there. We received bids for this project on February 1st. We received three bids on the project, and the low bid was submitted by Molstead Excavating in the amount of about $880,000. That was about 13% over our engineer's estimate, which was about $780,000. We are still going to recommend award of this project. A lot of those costs come from the pipe, the pipe material costs going up. This is the first sanitary project we've bid out this year of this caliber, so those prices are just going up a little bit more than we thought. Just a reminder, this is a project that we previously agreed to assume all the special assessments of, so there will be no assessments that go out to the property owners out in this area, and the city is looking to pay for those assessment costs internally using a state revolving fund loan just to get the lower interest rate on that. So our recommendation tonight is to approve the award to Molstead Excavating, the amount of $879,211, and then approve any necessary budget amendments as well.
Any questions? Ms. Osowski moves approval. Is there a second? Second by Weber, thank you. Further questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Crinkle, item 3.5, bid award for Project 8604, South 48th Street Shared Use Path from 17th to 32nd Avenue South.
Thank you, President Sandy, and members of the committee. Project before you is converting the existing gravel path out on South 48th Street from a gravel path to a concrete path. This project uses transportation alternative funding, which means there's 80% federal funding for the construction element of it. This project has not yet been bid. It will be bid on Friday, so we'll be updating the staff report and bringing that to City Council at the next meeting. Right now, the engineer's estimate for it is just over $600,000, and the city's share of that construction cost is about $115,000. With that, I can stand for any questions you may have.
Questions or comments? Why concrete for a shared use path?
Typically, it tends to be a little bit more durable, and we don't have to come back and then do an overlay over it a number of years in the future.
Ms. Osowski moves approval. Is there a second out there?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Mr. Veen, seconds, thank you. Further comment?
Durable, but there's a higher cost upfront, and for cycling, for people running and walking, the potential for cracks. On the Greenway, we use pavement rather than concrete. Was there a reason we used pavement rather than concrete on the Greenway? Because that's a very nice surface for runners and bikers, et cetera.
I'm guessing the original reason why asphalt was used out on the Greenway was for that project, it was a very large project. Costs may have been an element as a part of that, and trying to keep those costs low. Over the past several years, we've actually been overlaying a number of those sections of the Greenway Trail, so there are those additional costs that come into play for maintenance dollars, whereas on a concrete path, you may have to go and do a concrete panel replacement, replace segments from here and there. But long-term maintenance tends to be a lot less with concrete.
I mean, the Greenway is now, what, a couple decades old, and you're just doing the first overlays on those now, and that expense is, makes it so that concrete is actually cheaper over a century, or how, what's the timeframe?
Don't have an exact number for you.
Right.
Yeah, but.
Yes.
The general direction that we've been moving has been using concrete, similar to a majority of our new concrete roadways in town as well, especially with the frost heave that we have in town with the clays soils that we have. The durability tends to be, I think, one of the main reasons why we choose using that over an asphalt pavement like what you would see on the Greenway.
From, in my humble opinion, as President Sandy will sometimes say, as a usability issue, I think the asphalt is more comfortable, but I'm ready to move forward. Thanks.
Quick correction. I typically don't use the humble term.
Oh, you don't?
Right.
So there's a motion and a second by Weber. Further questions or comments?
President Sandy, I've got a quick question.
Yes, Mr. Weigel.
Mr. Crinkle, do you, do we have any numbers on how often that path is used? Because that's down in the industrial park area, correct?
That is correct. That it does go out to the industrial park. Unfortunately, I do not have recent pedestrian counts for that path.
That path only extend, it'd go from 17th to 32nd, but there isn't a path that goes north from 17. north from 17th to Demers, is there?
That is correct, there currently is not any path that goes in that, in that segment. However, the MPO's Long Range Transportation Plan, their Bike Ped Plan, does identify that as a future facility being installed there. I know that in our discussions in looking at South 48th Street, that the, a continuation of some kind of bike or pedestrian facility to connect these two locations from the shared use path that's proposed to be installed this summer and the the shared use path that runs along Demers Avenue, that has been part of our discussions as we look at reconstructing 48th Street from Demers to 17th in the future.
Okay. Further questions or comments?
Yeah, this is, may I, President?
Yeah, certainly.
Could you, could you bring some numbers back to us next week about how this is is less expensive, over what timeframe?
I could see what I could come up with.
Thanks, David. Thanks, Mr. Crinko.
And a general estimate of what the cost would be if we did, we were to use asphalt would be great. Thank you. Further comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Item 3.6, plans and specs for Project 8828 Riverside Stormwater Discharge Pond Silt Remover Removal. Good evening. Mr. Ryan?
Yep.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Good evening, Council President Sandy and members of the committee. Project 8828 consists of silt removal, cat tail removal, and reexcavation of the pilot channel for Riverside Pond. That's just east of Riverside Pool, not to be confused with the pool. This pond direct discharges to the Red River. So this pond and other ponds on the wet side of the levee were constructed as the part of the Corps of Engineers City Flood Protection Project. They were constructed as the Corps' attempt to meet water quality standards at the time, and the city is required to maintain these ponds as a part of that flood protection project. In recent years, silt accumulation has caused the water and, has caused water and additional silt to back up to the gate structure, which is located at the pond inlet. In the fall, the structure, late fall, the structure is closed in preparation for whatever flood event we're going to get in the spring. It's closed to prevent floodwaters from backing up into the pond underneath the levee through the storm sewer system. At the end of winter, just before the flood season really kicks off, accumulated silt and ice is around that gate structure and has to be removed so that it can be made sure that it's actually closed and that it can operate as intended. The process to remove material around that gate can be cumbersome and really labor intensive. So this project aims to alleviate maintenance issues and satisfy our maintenance requirements for the pond. This project is estimated to cost $167,000 and will be funded by the Flood Capital Maintenance Fund. Bid opening will take place in the next few weeks. Engineering recommends, council approves, plans and specifications, and directs engineering to advertise for construction. This project will be brought back for bid award in mid-March. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Ryan?
I'll move approval.
Moved by Veen, seconded by Osowski. Quick question, Mr. Phelan, perhaps you could tell me? If, if we're required to upkeep the ponds as part of our flood protection, why do we have to have this come to City Council to ask us to do something that we have to do? Why won't we just administratively take care of this because we know we have to do it? There is no, it makes no, we, we have to upkeep our flood protection system, so.
I think because it's going to be city dollars over 50,000, you're going to need to approve them, so I think what, what they're doing, they're not going to be a special assess, so in this case, you know, they're going to be flood protection or stormwater enterprise funds. They want to know, let you know well in advance, so when you do get the bids and approve them of, you know, where the project started and ended in the bid.
Sure, I mean, I think it's great to get the brief and to know that we're upkeeping our flood protection system. I just, I often question why I'm being asked a question for which there's only one response. So anyway, thank you, Mr. Ryan. There's a motion and a second.
Those questions are so much easier.
Exactly. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Item 3.7, plans and specs, Project 8752 and 53, 2024 City Sidewalks and ADA Kerb Ramps. Mr. Lieberman, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy, members of the committee. This staff report encompasses two annual projects, that of constructing and repairing sidewalks, and another project of repairing curb ramps to meet Americans with Disabilities Act or ADA requirements. The city identifies requirements for these contracts a couple different ways. There's residents' concerns for safety if there's cracked sidewalks. Our city also identifies areas that need repair. There's also portions of the city, as the city grows, that we identify the need to install sidewalk or curb ramps. So for those residents that request their sidewalk to be reconstructed, we will just go ahead and accomplish that work with this contract. For those that the city recommends replacement, because that work is special assessed to the property, we'll be bringing a list to City Council in a couple months, requesting your approval of those specific properties. We do give those residents the opportunity to repair it themselves if they can find a contract that's less expensive or do the work themselves, but otherwise, the city would accomplish that work for them and special assess that. So tonight, we're requesting approval of plans and specifications and direction to advertise for bid for this annual requirement.
Thank you, Mr. Lieberman. Anyone have any questions? I have a question. Can people protest the city requiring them to put in a sidewalk or fix their sidewalk?
I don't believe so. I know there's, that's more of a legal question that perhaps Mr. Gousted could weigh in on, but my understanding is since city code requires sidewalks for safety purposes, that that would be a requirement.
Sure, Mr. Lieberman, at what point then, how do we determine if someone, so I, I in a previous life, lived on Belmont Road, northern end of Belmont Road. I probably had a six inch crack in my concrete, and it was probably at a seven degree pitch. And nobody came and knocked on my door and said I should replace it, although I knew I should have replaced it, I didn't have the bucks to do it at the time. And I know for a fact, it's still that way today. So at what point do, when do we go and knock on their door? How do we make that determination?
President Sandy, if this is a formal request?
No, this is not, I'm purely, I'm curious, how do we, how do we decide?
Yeah, there is some, there is a objective and subjective component to it. Obviously, if a, if a panel is cracked, that doesn't make it a safety tripping hazard because there's many cracked panels, that's, that's the nature of concrete. But when we start to have heaved panels where there's, there's a sizable lip that somebody can catch their foot as, say, a child's running down the sidewalk, and we deem it's, it's a safety hazard, or if the panel has multiple cracks and it's obviously shattered, then we would deem that a safety hazard.
Thank you. Are there further questions? Moved by Weber, seconded by Osowski. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Item 3.8, plans and specs for Project 8758, District 779, 2024 Mill and Overlay. Mr. Lieberman?
Thank you again, President Sandy. This, this is our annual mill and overlay contract. This previously came before council. On January 16th, where council approved the engineer's report and created the district, since then, we have held a public input meeting on January 31st. We had four attendees. They had questions about the nature of the work, the special assessment process, but nobody was, expressed concern about doing the work itself. Two items of note, since it came to City Council in January, we did remove two blocks of Fourth Avenue from the scope of this contract, and we will be addressing those with, with the study for Phoenix Elementary School. We anticipate there's going to be some pavement work recommended with that, so we don't want to undo new asphalt as part of a future project. Likewise, last week, I met with Councilmember Lunskey. She requested a second speed table be installed on Reeves Drive. We discussed that with her, and from a technical perspective, speed tables are very hard to justify because of, they have a small impact on the speed of vehicles. We tend to see vehicles slow down for them, go over the speed table, and then they speed up right away. But because she's requesting this, we're looking at it, and we will rely on City Council to direct that if that's a, if it's the right decision for that neighborhood. So with that, we are requesting approval of plans and specifications tonight and direction to advertise for bids.
Thank you, Mr. Lieberman. Is there a question or comment? Anyone? Anyone? Moved by Weber, seconded by Osowski. Further comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lieberman? Item 3.9, plans and specs for Project 8788, District 780, reconstruct Walnut from South Fifth Street to First Avenue South. Mr. McGuire?
Thank you, President Sandy, members of the committee. We, we have this project in front of you previously in January to create the district, and right now, we're looking at approving the plans and specs. Funding for the project is going to be a combination of special assessment of benefiting property owners and city share. Total construction cost for the project is estimated to be 564,000. Current city policy is to fund 80% of the cost of reconstruction of local streets. The city share is estimated at 452,000, and will be funded from the Street and Infrastructure Fund 4815. We'll have this in front of you again in March to approve the bids. So right now, we're looking at, staff recommends approving plans and specs and direct engineering to advertise for construction bids for Project Number 8788.
Move approval? Thank you, Mr. McGuire, moved by Weber, seconded by Osowski. Any further comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Where am I? 310, Create District for Project 8790, District 782, reconstruct 10th Avenue South from South 48th Street to 300 feet west of 50th. Mr. McGuire?
Thank you, President Sandy. So this is a new project. This is a reconstruction of 10th Avenue South from South 48th Street to 350 feet west of South 50th Street. That is out in the Western Industrial Park area. That existing roadway was constructed in 1984, and we have seen some street and some storm sewer failure through that section. And because of those failures, we're looking at reconstructing this section. We also evaluated some of the other public utilities in the area. Water main and sanitary sewer were deemed to have no issues, so we won't do any work to that. There is no street lighting there currently, so we will be installing commercial streetlights through that section, as well as replacing the storm sewer failures as mentioned earlier, and then adding a few inlets to improve the drainage for that road. Total construction cost for this project is currently estimated at 1.47 million. A portion will be funded with the city share, and the current city policy is to fund 80% of the cost for a local street. City share is estimated at 1.18 million, and that will be funded from the Street and Infrastructure Fund 4815. Benefiting properties will be special assessed for the project, and we are anticipating to construct this in the '24 construction season. Staff recommends approving the engineer's report, creating the special assessment district, and directing the engineering department to prepare plans and specs for Project Number 8790.
Great, thank you. Any comments or questions?
Move approval?
Moved by Kalamie, thank you, seconded by Osowski, great. Hearing no other comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Mr. McGuire, appreciate it. 311, or bid 2024-2, easement sewer cleaning machine purchase.
Hi. Good evening, I'm standing in for Dan Hanson tonight. So this is for a easement sewer cleaning machine. Our current one is from 1990 and is no longer working. So we went out for bid and only received one bid from Flexible Pipe and Tools, so we're looking to approve that bid and then declare the old machine a surplus.
Any questions from Seaverston? Moved by Weber, seconded by Osowski. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, 312, HVAC improvements for the raw water intake building, City Project 8696. Ms. Seaverston?
Yeah, thank you. So this is for the replacement of the existing HVAC system at the raw water building. This is from about 2003, and so it's about 21 years old, so we're looking to replace that. Again, we only received one bid, so we're looking to approve the bid with McFarland that will remove and replace the existing unit.
Moved by Osowski. There a second out there?
Second.
Mr. Weigle, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Seaverston, item 313, request for qualifications redevelopment of former water treatment plant site. Mr. Phelan?
Council President, members of the committee, hold. Well, this is, we're at the point of looking for the, the world-class vision for the water treatment plant. As you recall, we did transition to the new water treatment plant in, in 2020, and the other thing that we've done is that we really have promoted some downtown redevelopment in Hall of Ann, Beacon by Epic, and Franklin on Fourth over the last few years. And so now we think the time is really to start moving, you know, south of the tracks and looking at this site as a further redevelopment areas with all the actions that we've, we've taken as we move forward. There's an RFQ, a draft, and I want to thank, always great to work with Meredith Richards, and as I've, I'll let you folks know, she's planning to retire early April, and this is one of the projects that I'm going to ask her to at least part-time carry through. And so that's going to be an exciting thing that I'll, will be able to continue to work with Meredith. Really, the RFP, RFP really does three things. We want an RFQ with a multidisciplinary team that can look at this particular site. Number two, we want a viable vision, both form and function. And then finally, we want words like, you know, ambitious, actionable, comprehensive as part of that redevelopment. So in other words, we want a team approach, we want public and local input, but we really want a world-class development with world-class expertise, because really, this is the, the final redevelopment we have in the city post-flood of 1997. So it's, it's pretty exciting that we're here at that, really kind of one of our last major redevelopment efforts in the city of Grand Forks. You know, after the flood, we moved several facilities, we're on the wrong side of the, of the flood wall, and so the, the pump station and reservoir first got moved to the new water treatment plant site in and around between 2000 and 2005. The raw water intake got moved to the dry side of the levee, and that's going to, that's currently there, south of the water treatment plant, and that got, again, situated in, in between 2000 and 2005. At the time, we were looking at the water treatment plant, and, and there was discussion about whether we should rehab that existing facility and, and expand it there. The City Council made a decision to make some minor reinvestments in the facility, so we did that in 2007 and '08. We reinvested about a little over $2 million to get us another 10 years, knowing that we were going to look to move forward with a greenfield water treatment plant that was started up in, in 2020. So that all paid off, so we even got, we probably got about 12 years out of there. So thank goodness, a lot of knocking on wood and fingers crossed got us to, to that path. The current, the downtown water treatment plant has been the site for water activities in Grand Forks for 100 years, plus or minus, and those three buildings that main, maintain that campus down there were constructed in 1956, 1968, and 1984, as, as we move forward. The important part, and you can see on one of the attachments, is the request for qualifications, is, it's, the facility is right at the forks of the river, and obviously, that was strategic back in the day because we draw water from both the Red River and the Red Lake River, so that was really a strategic location for the good of the community, it's really served us well for, for these last several generations. As we move forward, we wanted to tie, dream big, but also with, you know, having economic viability and probably some political viability in what we want to try to do. We see this site, if you, you know, if you We see this site, if you, you know, if you just add up the investment that was made by Olive Anne, in the Olive Anne, Project Beacon by Epic, and Franklin on Fourth, that's, I was just adding up some quick numbers, my, that's like $135 million of construction in those three buildings. I think this site, it's about a block and a half. We are looking to, there's four additional residential-type properties. We are, we have reached out to see if we could, you know, close that two-block within reason to do that. If we can't, we'll have to move on. But really, that should be $100 million-plus reinvestment in Grand Forks in a very, you know, multi-use type of facilities. That's what we envision in that particular area. And I know Melanie and Kim are going to come up and talk about the community green, but really, part of this redevelopment is to further engage the Greenway and flood protection system in a better way. And that might include Third Street and that flood wall. How can we redo that better? Because this site is also not only at the forks of the river, it's on the very south end of that community green, and how do we make that really more enhance it? It's at the enhancement of a bridge location in the Point Bridge, similar to the Sorley Bridge in the community green. So there's lots of symbiotic relationships between what Melanie and Kim are going to talk about, what we did, you know, post-97 flood, to what we're trying to now to recreate in this particular area. This, what we're asking for is this is intended to be, to provide this grand vision, this world-class vision, provide some conceptual designs, and then also work with us on an implementation of this. And so between now and what we're seeing in the RFQ by Q1 of next year, 2025, that would be delivered back to you. With city council acceptance, that's how we're going to move forward. Then we would do an additional request for qualifications where we'd say, basically, here's the, here's the concept, here's the design that we, conceptual design we want to move forward. Then we'd do a follow-up request for proposals or qualifications and asking for development, for specific development and probably some specific design on that particular site. I think it's, the important part of the implementation why we want to do this in two phases because they'll help, help best for the city to really move forward with the phased reinvestment in this. And likely, it will be different than who creates the vision. And so we want to, it's going to likely be a private sector developer that is going to come forward under some sort of arrangement with the city to move forward with that development. What we've talked about is, just because it's been the home of Grand Forks Water Treatment, is that we need to have something that lasts, not only the great development that's going to last the next 100 years and really something to be proud of, it also needs to have some sort of public component as part of this. Because I suspect in all these developments, we're going to look at, you know, the city's looking, would likely demolish this site and remediate it. We did a lot of that after the flood with asbestos and those sorts of things. But if you look at the facility, as high as it is above ground, it's that below ground. And so you have to think of that facility. We have set aside $5.4 million in a drinking water state revolving loan fund to make those, demolishing of those facilities. However, before we start demolition, we kind of want to know what that final design concept is, because that'll inform how much demolition we need to do on that particular site with the foundations that are well below ground. So that's another part that really is important. Really, it sets out the RFQ is that, you know, this visionary development team is going to set out a project management, they're going to do stakeholder outreach, they're going to come up with a conceptual development, they're going to conduct a feasibility study, and then they're going to come up with an implementation strategy that they think is best in our case. We are, also have on our team, we have Baker Tilly, that has been our financial advisor on all these incentives, so there'll be a third party on the city side on reviewing this. Also, AA2S is, from a civil engineering perspective, has done a lot of the work in that water treatment plan, and they're going to be really helpful from the city's perspective on the demolition and all those sorts of things in this particular site. So we'll leverage them also as part of the plan. What we intend to do is to release this request for qualifications in February, if you're so inclined. And then likely by May, we would have then selected a firm and have negotiated a fee for your approval in that timeframe. And then we'd be off between, you know, this April-May timeframe until probably the first quarter of next year where we'd come back with a concept that we can move forward with. And obviously, there'll be lots of input with city council and the public at large, both the neighborhood and the city at large, about what we can do in that particular area. So there's lots of ideas, and, you know, we've done some conceptual designs, but this is really an opportunity for us to create something really wonderful in that area and draw upon some experience that others have done to renovate, I want to call it, an industrial site in the downtown area, and that's not very often that the city of Grand Forks is going to have an opportunity like that. So with that, I'd open to any questions, and also Meredith Richards is here too, that's helped me out on this.
Questions? I got a question. Todd, who, who, give me an example of somebody that would be responding to this request for qualifications. Are these engineering companies or architectural companies or a combination thereof?
I think it's going to be a combination also with, it's going to be a combination of engineering, architectural, planning, financial, and just firms that really kind of vision things worldwide on doing things. So they're going to be multidisciplinary groups that are going to come together. And what I've heard, what I've heard from various groups, in fact, we had the group that's, I think they're from Scandinavia, the Snowheta, that was in town because they're working on the Theodore Roosevelt Museum. Firms like theirs that are world-class and do projects around the world, they would be interested in, you know, applying for projects like this. So I think it's going to be firms like that that are going to be interested. So it's really going to be important not only to engage our local groups, but also look out nationally and internationally, because I think we really have an opportunity to put a landmark down in Grand Forks in this location. So I think there's lots of interest. Over the years, we've gotten lots of interest from regional firms, from Minneapolis firms that have awaited an opportunity. But I think just trying to not just go right to the end, what we're trying to do is create this grand vision that we can actually move forward with, within our market of Grand Forks, really have the city council approve that concept under those various conditions, and then move forward with another proposal to further develop that. But really have the city of Grand Forks say, this is kind of how we want the concept to move forward.
Yeah. Vice President Weber.
This feels similar to the process that was engaged with Arbor Park to Selkirk. In what ways is this different? It's a larger development. There's a lot more money involved. There's a greater opportunity with the Greenway, the adjacency, you know, it being adjacent to the Greenway, the forks, there's those aspects. But in terms of the process, how will this be different or is it very similar?
I think this is going to be, this visioning part that we're working on is something that's going to be more different than we did in that case. You know, we really specified in the Arbor Park development, we want a, we wanted housing, condos, maybe some mixed use. So we prescribed what we wanted on that vision to start with, knowing that it was, it was a smaller, you know, was it 35-foot log?
And this is more open-ended? Yeah.
I would say this is more inclined, in my career, of the Greenway. And so when you look at what the Greenway is now, it seems rather elementary that it should always look like that. The Greenway could have been the wet side of the flood protection system, and that's could have been as good as it's got. But we, the Corps thankfully brought consultants to the community, so as part of the flood protection project, we should vision a Greenway. And before, before the Corps came here and we were looking forward with a flood protection project, probably nobody knew what a term "Greenway" was in Grand Forks or very few, I should say. So they created a vision, we should have this vision of a Greenway and not just waste that space between the flood protection system and the river like it was, you know, previous to this flood protection project. And now look what we had. But that vision came from world-class consultants, and that created the vision that ultimately the city moved forward with, with the county or with the Corps of Engineers. But the city invested, a lot of that funding in the, in the Greenway portion was the city's investment. The Corps certainly helped facilitate that because it was part of the flood protection project, but it was really the city's investment that moved forward. And there was lots of, you know, doubt whether that could happen in Grand Forks. I mean, I heard people that would say, nobody's going to walk or ride bike on a, on a Greenway. Who would ever do that? And so look at where we are today. So I would make it more inclined with, not the Arbor Park development, I would make it more inclined with the Greenway.
Thanks.
That we have in front of us.
Thank you, Todd.
Ms. Phelan, how do we? The architectural firms that I'm aware of are really good at planning big, grandiose things. They like lots of stuff and big and expensive. But if the, if we, if a developer can't profitably build whatever our grand vision is, should we be bringing in developers too? Like, I'm not sure. How do we get the two to match up so that we've got this grand vision and we can actually implement it, rather than paying a consultant to give us a grand vision that can't possibly go forward?
Yeah. I think that's an important part of this. It's not only a grand vision, but something that you have to do. And so the financial viability of this is the other part of, this multilateral team that comes together has to have some economic reality into it. And as part of the stakeholder, we always think a stakeholder involvement is, you know, neighborhoods or citizenry. They'll also be engaging the development community as part of their economic viability of this. So it's not only a grand vision, but it's got to be a viable vision that we move forward with. And so that'll be part of the stakeholder involvement. And what I want to do is create, as we want, create this vision that's a viable vision, we want to make sure that when we go to the next step, that the development community can actually execute what we want. And it'll be very important that not only the people of Grand Forks want this to happen, but it can, the development community can actually deliver on the concept that we come forward with.
Okay. Ms. Weber moves approval. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Veen, thank you. Any further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 314, proposed enhancements to areas of the Greenway along DeMers Avenue downtown. Ms. Parvee, good evening.
Good evening. Council President Sandy, members of the committee. Last year, Kim had worked with putting together, putting together an RFQ for exactly what we're going to talk about tonight. There was a desire to look at improving the area, revitalizing the area perhaps in the downtown near the Greenway. There are some of those pieces that are 20-plus years old and actually have quite aged quite a bit over time. So a group was put together and worked with RDG Planning and Design, and a partner is going to visit with us tonight, provide an overview for you of the, a little bit more on the details of that plan, as there was community input that was incorporated, as well as kind of a visioning of what people in our community wanted to see. And so we're going to turn this over to Bruce and have him do a high-level overview for you and then be available to talk to you about next steps of what we're considering. So I'll turn it over to you, Bruce.
Okay. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, thank you for being here.
Yes, absolutely. Thanks for the introduction, Melanie. Appreciate it. And I am assuming everyone can see the screen okay?
Yep, no problem.
Perfect. Thank you for the confirmation. So as Melanie described, what I would like to do is basically walk through at a high level the renovation master plan that's been proposed for the Greenway and Gateway in downtown Grand Forks. We won't get too far into the weeds on all the different content that's in this report, but it is publicly available and ready for anyone to peruse. So I will say that, you know, we're not going to be able to read every single word on here, but if there are questions along the way, please feel free to interrupt and let me know you have those, and we can do our best to answer them. So without further ado, I'll start in here. I have this shared just one page at a time. This is, of course, a document meant to be read with pages open, so some of the images do cross over the interior scene, but this will give us the meat and potatoes of the information. As Melanie mentioned, RDG came on board a little over a year ago after an RFQ was issued, and we, of course, applied to join the project team, led by Kim Greenall with another steering committee of folks in the community. I look at where we are focusing, obviously, but in this report, we have a number of things. This is kind of just the breakdown of it. The introduction, of course, talking about the project as a whole. The public engagement recap, which there was quite a bit of, engaging folks of Grand Forks. Concept development, diving into how the different concepts were generated, and feedback about that concept development, as well as the final master plan vision, and of course, conclusion where we discuss phasing and next steps, which Melanie and Kim will elaborate So this is one of those images that gets cut off a little bit on screen, but we see the majority of what we need to in our focus area. So this is not envisioning the entire Greenway system, but rather the focus of downtown adjacent to the Red River and adjacent to the entry along DeMers. So we see the connection to the Town Square in the center of this image, of course, the railroad on the left-hand side, and then what's cut off on the right is University Boulevard, University Avenue coming down, sorry. And of course, the connection with the Sorley Bridge here in the foreground. A piece of text that I won't bore you by reading, but what we want to break into here first is the introduction and really the public engagement process. So the image that we just saw both sides of, there was the, one of the initiation images of the project where there was an open house held in Town Square. We had a good number of residents coming out to provide feedback. So images of that interaction are shown here. And then we followed up this outdoor event with an online survey to ask basically the same questions that we did in person, but gained even a wider breadth of information and feedback from residents. And as we co-along here, I'll go through the questions kind of one by one of the feedback that we asked for, what we requested, to help shape the vision and how we are moving forward at this time. And so questions like, what do you enjoy about the Grand Forks flood wall entrance along DeMers Avenue? Trying to be as specific to the area as possible, because of course, people could misconstrue the area. And so I'm actually going to zoom in here a little bit. And we see, you know, access to the Greenway and walkability as a huge priority. Of course, first impressions, understanding that it is a public space for people. And on, of course, the other side of that coin of what do you not enjoy about the Grand Forks flood wall entrance along DeMers? So it being bland and dated, some of the limitations that the flood wall itself creates between downtown and the Greenway itself, lack of vegetation, maybe some too-industrial thoughts, et cetera. We also ask how often people are coming to the area, thinking about walking through Town Square, being in downtown along the Greenway, et cetera. And that was a good amount of data to just have as really quantitative information for our team. Next, we showed a series of images. Images worth 1,000 words, right? So thinking about how, what people are really envisioning when they're describing something. We divided this to a series of categories, so we can see the text here recalling Gateway entrance and thinking structurally, what could this become? So precedents, you know, across the nation and beyond about what a gateway experience could be. Ideas for waterfronts, events, things that activate those edges like we see along the Red River. Opportunities for the flood wall itself, so thinking about what it could become, what kind of artistic integration could occur. And then bridge and lighting in this bottom area, thinking about how much light can have an impact on an area like this. These numbers, I should say, are the number of votes that these images received as in support for the style of graphic that we see. Next, we have furnishings and public art, seeing a wide variety of opportunities and precedents for those imagery. And then, of course, wayfinding, a key element to many downtown environments, Greenways, et cetera. And opportunities for play, thinking about all the diverse opportunities associated with that and how we could draw more people to the area. There were also some more open-ended questions. You know, what should the design team know? This is the introduction to the process, so hey, what should we know about this? And some good direction, a lot of this enveloped around being multi-generational, so not just focusing on kids, not just focusing on young adults, but really thinking about all ages represented in the area. Also thinking about furniture, ensuring the safety of the flood wall is obviously continued long in the future. Integration of art, timeless materials. And then also concerns. What are your concerns? And so people are concerned about deferred maintenance, things that would make it too modern and not timeless, kind of the flip side of the things that people want us to know. Opportunities for graffiti, lack of safety, et cetera. These graphics we see here are in response to these two questions of, what are some features that you wish to see the Grand Forks flood wall entrance? So we see, you know, diverse planting as a big subset of text here, outdoor amenities, lighting, seating, art, a classic look. And then we categorize some open-ended questions about people's big ideas. This is a fun one to do in person because we get people drawing ideas and sketches, which we saw an image of, but we were able to categorize these into five different categories. One, fun, thinking about unique things, swings, hammocks. One, fun, thinking about unique things, swings, hammocks, stuff that'll attract younger generations. Two, being mindful, you know, native plantings, thinking about sustainable solutions for the Greenway. Three, light, thinking about safety lighting and also accent lighting and beautification. Next, water, with kayaking and water access, really embracing the river and not turning our backs to it. And pride, so thinking about hometown pride, the history of Grand Forks, local artists, and really a grand entrance experience. So, next, we have a scribble here, but it's a segue into the concept development. So, this is where we took all that information in coordination with steering committee members to really think about what the concepts could be. That is, of course, paired with an inventory analysis process, where we go out on site, you know, review all the existing conditions and see things like, yes, the, the paint on the metal system of the gateway entrance currently is peeling, it's, it's time for some updates, there's a fair amount of settling of pavers in different areas along the Greenway near the gazebo and otherwise. But opportunities too, connections to the river, thinking about all the, all the different context relationships that we see. And of course, the Greenway vision itself, wanting to stay strong with what the Greenway wants to be. As a main focus of this, and really where this process started, was focusing on the gateway experience. And so, part of the initial concept development is thinking about, okay, what are concepts that we can envision for the gateway experience? We see three that were developed here, shared publicly, online for feedback, and a variety of information was received regarding how people were feeling about each of those concepts. Paired with that, we, of course, developed an overall concept plan, and actually, a series of concept plans based on the input from the public. Each of these different plans were also shared online through an interactive website, where people could not only bring, take in the information and understand what's happening, but really provide feedback and guidance on how to move that forward. And that is described further within this public feedback chapter. So, this is a series of screenshots from that online resource, that website, where we looked at both the gateway survey and the Greenway survey, thinking about what concepts are being proposed. So, as mentioned previously, there were three original concepts for the gateway, we expanded that to four, and those were anywhere from kind of a classic archway to pulling through the, the style of the Sorley Bridge, or more artistic iterations. Paired with that, people were able to kind of upvote or downvote, meaning like or dislike certain things about the different concepts plans that were being proposed, and provide feedback to the team, which was invaluable in moving this forward. So, we see a variety of, of concept plans here. We had two different ones that were listed on the website, shown on the website, and a lot of people interact with them. So, next, we have the master plan chapter, basically taking all the, all the feedback received from that process, and using it to refine the overall vision. The biggest change in this process regarding feedback and coordination with the steering committee is that we decided that the gateway feature along DeMers really needed to not go over DeMers. We didn't, certainly didn't want to impact any use of the flood wall system, and making sure that it was easy to install the flood deterrents and take them out as needed. And so, we, we pivoted to thinking about the spaces around the entrance instead of going over the roadway. Paired with that, is looking at a lot of history and things about how we can plan for the future, what can be advanced about these concepts, rather than just a typical monument sign you may see out of a residential, outside of a residential community. So, these next two images we'll see are, are one of the proposed gateway monument solutions. This is a vertical element that stands tall at the entry, but does not go over the roadway. And I'll, shall I skip to the next image, because it's a little larger? But what this does is offers kind of two scenarios for this gateway system. One, an LED-infused, ever-changing digital screen that extend, extends up from a terracotta or clay base, where we think back on the history of the Greenway and the Red River, as well as towards the future with downtown and additional future development. In tandem with that is the second option, which we call, quote unquote, "the red." So, thinking about what this portion of Greenway specifically could be nicknamed or referenced as, and the red came to the top of the list from, from that perspective. Now, this scenario, as well as the image on the next page, looks at, you know, an interactive opportunity, kind of an Instagrammable moment, if you will, for an experience and a placemaking component for downtown. The final plan looks at having one version of this, the red, and one version of the vertical monument on either side, with the red being on the wet side of the, of the levee, and the vertical monument being on the dry side of the levee. Lastly, we get into, of course, the final master plan vision for this portion of the Greenway. And there's a number of things that are referenced as, you know, important elements to remember. One, there's a number of items on site that can be removed because of their dilapidation or their age, of course, adjustments being made at the time. There's adjustments to parking shown as well. Connectivity is important, and thinking about not only to downtown Grand Forks, but to east Grand Forks too, as well as entertainment. I should have noted when we started, RDG planning design was part of the Down, Grand Forks Downtown Action Plan, where the original vision, as seen, seen here in the bottom of the page for the town square, was generated. And so, we wanted to make sure we were respecting and honoring what's been done in the past already, as far as planning for the future, and thinking about how this system of plans integrates in that in the future. Next, opportunities for exercise, play, and of course, respecting what's on site, the history of the site, and where it can go in the future. So, this is the master plan graphic of, of the Greenway area. I'm going to zoom in just a bit here, so we can see it a little larger scale. I will note, since we just said, number 17 here is the town square improvements that were proposed in the Downtown Action Plan, so maintaining the paddle wheel sculpture, connecting into a strong re-envisioned town square, and having strong connections from there through the Greenway. Next, I'll kind of start on the left side of the screen, which is the northwest portion of the Greenway. Number two is a strong entrance from downtown, thinking the Seven, Second Avenue connection that already exists, but retrofitting this zone from a very large surface paved parking lot to having amenities with fitness equipment, a bocce ball court, pickleball court, and a, an abbreviated parking scenario and drop-off that connects over to gain access to the river. Paired with that could be a warming house, boathouse scenario, which is number five here. And then, generally, along the river's edge, this plan shows better restoration in the future, thinking about that sustainability component of the Greenway, water management, and how we can really be resilient to floods in the future. The biggest potential shift in, in this planning process is what we see as number eight here, stretching across the Red River. And it's, it's using the old swim bridge foundation as a pedestrian, base for a pedestrian bridge that connects Grand Forks to east Grand Forks. This is, this is a big move. This is a, a big item that would forever change this zone, and obviously, all of this takes a lot of coordination with the Army Corps of Engineers. We've had preliminary conversations about all those things, and there's really nothing, nothing out of the realm of possibilities shown here. It's just coordination is needed, of course. As we shift further south and east of this, we see a stronger connection to the river from 13 up to 11, with the idea of a stormwater management system and collecting water from an expanded parking area, which could potentially host the farmer's market in the future, and treating that before it gets to the river. As we cross DeMers and move to the southeast, we see a, a simple, but fairly grand amphitheater experience, really meaning this is a sloped lawn zone that can take on a larger event if it needs to, but understanding that the programming needed for really large events and concerts in this zone really isn't completely realistic. So, thinking about an adaptable, open green space that is flexible in use. And as we get all the way over here to the right side, thinking about an adventure playscape. And so, this is an area that would obviously be a huge tractor for children and families, but really can, connected with the rest of this, be a very multi-generational experience for the entire Greenway in this zone. You'll see, in connection to each of these areas, on, on both sides of the levee, it's really more intentional connections. So, ADA ramps and stairs that get up to the top of the levee and back down on the other side, so you don't have to be funneled all the way to DeMers or Second Avenue to have that experience, but there's other opportunities. And with that, opportunities for really great views to the river and back into downtown. The next couple images within this document itself are expanded views of that master plan, so it really focuses in on some more details and direct labels for each of those zones. And then, lastly, we, of course, get to a conclusion. And the conclusion focuses on phasing opportunities. There's no uber-specific way that this gets built, right? But what we've done here is provide some recommendations. Phase one could easily, easily be the gateway monument improvements, thinking about improving and, and removing some of the elements that are, that are aging and, and fading now, and then thinking about how that evolves into future phases. Town square and its connection to those gateway monuments seems quite important. Parking reconfiguration can open up for the opportunities such as the farmer's market and other changes on site with pickleball, bocce ball, et cetera. Really, after that point, it's flexible per funding. And Melanie and Kim are going to talk a little bit more about funding opportunities in our very near future, but whether different opportunities come up, it can pivot and, and just think about which portion wants to happen next as a momentum generator, or keeping momentum from past projects. I'm going to stop there. I'm going to hop back to the over all master plan graphic here, and just ask if there's questions either for myself or for Melanie and Kim.
Any questions? Hearing none, thank you. Melanie?
So, the reason for bringing this towards you tonight is, or back to you tonight, is to talk about an opportunity that was presented to us. There is some funding through the Outdoor Recreation Legacy Program. It's administered through the National Parks Service, and you have to work with the state in order to be able to receive the funding. The state did approach Kim and talked about the opportunity, because there is only three cities within the state of North Dakota that are eligible for this, and it's Grand Forks, Fargo, and West Fargo. And so, at that time, Kim had just talked to, to them about what we were planning and looking at, and, you know, we had this grandiose vision with no funding, right? Like, lots of good ideas, but really no way to implement. And so, this is an opportunity that we could look at in order to look at being able to phase in some of these portions of the project. We haven't said we're going to do this piece of it yet, but we wanted to share this with you tonight, so that you were aware of the planning that's been done. You might have seen it, or we know that Ms. Lunskey's been part of that as well, but wanted to let you know where we're at, and then we wanted to, with your approval, bring back something in the near future, in which we could apply for funding through this granting opportunity, and look for improvements in that downtown area.
Great. Comments or questions from Ms. Parvy?
Sure, I, I'll make comments.
Mr. Weber, yes, sir.
I think it's more comments than questions. Maybe there'll be a question or two. Fantastic, exciting ideas. I don't know that you need us adding to that or changing anything. You've gone out and done the public outreach to, to come up with this. The kind of list that's been developed is stuff that I would have hoped to have seen. I really like the reconfiguration of the surface parking lot into something that would be more useful. The idea of creating a space down there for the farmer's market sounds wonderful. I'm a little concerned, but it was mentioned that there would be lots of conversation, I, I don't remember the word you used, whether it was conversation with the corps or coordination with them, to have buildings down there, the, the warming sheds and, and such as that. That seems ambitious, but wonderful, if that's possible. And so much of this seems like it could be done at reasonable expenses, especially if someone else is paying the bill. So, when is that, that grant process? Is it a grant? It's a grant, of course, right?
It's actually a one-for-one match, so it is a, it is a grant process, but that, that initial application is due the end of April. But we do need to work directly with the, the staff, with the state of North Dakota in order to be able to apply, which they've reached out and have an interest in the project itself. We haven't picked certain components. Definitely, there is a phasing plan in here, as well as a, you know, an estimate for our budget. If we were going to proceed with any certain portion of it, we'd want to do, you know, phase it as the community would like to see that development.
Great. So, I stumbled on a really important question then about the grant. It's a one-for-one match, but one-for-one could be the city, the county, the park district all coming together? Am I right?
It could be, yep. There is in-kind as well, so.
And the Greenway has always been that kind of shared approach to the community.
It has been in the past, correct?
Yes. So, have, have presentations been made to our, our other partners?
No additional funding requests have been made yet.
And, and you're not even making a funding request of us at this time?
No, we are not.
Yes. But are there any estimates? What would, when the, the funding request does come forward, what do we think it might be?
We haven't decided yet which portion, because we really wanted to get some feedback from you this evening.
What's the, what's the total budget for everything you've showed us?
About 28 million. I think 25 to 28, yeah. The pedestrian bridge is a, is a large cost of that.
Right.
And that would be really dreaming big. I don't know that that would be an initial request from us. It'd be more kind of that low-hanging fruit, like we've talked about, or, you know, additional playscape area. Something that's a little bit more attractive initially to be able to continue to have, you know, the momentum to be able to continue to develop the downtown area, or revitalize it, I should say.
Governor Walz has lots of money. He can, he can help pay for that, so that would be good.
Well, that would be one point where there's both state involvement is, is the bridge. It's a clever juxtaposition of agenda items here. If we're looking at the redevelopment of the water treatment facility, that would be in this area, right? Yes.
Yep, just to the south of that, yep.
Just to the south of that. And so, how do we blend those two visioning processes?
I think with continued discussions and sharing what's going on within the city, I think it's just the, the timing of everything hasn't been completely ironed out, but yeah, I think it's, it's the opportunity to be able to share, you know, what's being planned for downtown and how we can reach that.
But, and April, is that a drop-dead date?
That is for this, for this grant, yes.
For this grant. And how much money is available through this grant? Do they?
Millions.
Millions.
Yeah. So, when we initially talked in the staff, or at a staffing level, it was, we could look at maybe a couple of the, like I said, lower-hanging fruit, but also something that's impactful to the community, and, and really maybe even phase it. I don't know, working with the state, you know, the staff, how, how we can get, how we want to do the project, but if there is an opportunity to maybe phase it over a couple of years too, it might be more impactful, but it depends on how much and where that local share comes from as well.
Well, instead of starting off and saying, well, what if we just do the $500 option? Let's, let's think about the, the big option, so 28 million to have all of it. And President Sandy's already noted that the bridge is an expensive part of this, that we would hope, that would require both states to be involved. So, there, there's a chunk of the funding. And after that, if it's 15 million that's left after that, so a $7.5 million match, and if the county and park district chipped in, now we're looking at, you know, two and a half million to get this $30 million improvement, right? And when would we be making those kinds of decisions? When would you need that level of, of feedback from us?
Well, in order to apply for these fundings, it would be the end of April. We weren't quite thinking that big initially, but, but.
Let's, let's stay away from the $500 solution and think, yeah, right. The point of this is to think big, right? Yes.
The minimum project is, request is at $300,000, and I think that's with the total project of $600,000 because of the match. So, they are wanting us to, to look at larger, larger sums. I just wasn't quite as high in the millions as you were.
Oh, I thought you said 28 million.
No. We, that's the total project, yes. We thought maybe we would look at, starting with a few things and going from there, but we can definitely.
So, we're getting close, much closer to the $500 solution. What's the $600,000 get us?
It, that, I'm not sure that would be enough initially, so.
[laughing]
We, like I said, we hadn't really made a decision on what to bring forward, but it was, it would be impactful, so it'd be probably a couple million at least, right?
Uh huh. With county, are there plans to take this on the road and show the county and the park district?
We definitely can do that, yes.
Thanks.
They don't have any money either. Ms. Ososki?
I guess I'd just like to comment on a couple of things. As for our entrance, when you're going over DeMers, our gates that say Grand Forks, I mean, I don't mind them, yeah, they could use, you know, maybe some upkeep or something different. I'm, I don't like the electronic signs at all. I, I think they'll just kind of look tacky. I'd like to keep it just. I'd like to keep it just without those. I do like the pedestrian bridge, though, because I think that thing in the middle of our river is a real eyesore. So, then, but it, I mean, I love amphitheaters, but if we build like an amphitheater-type thing, then we still have town square, and then we have the beacon too, right? Like, do we have enough events that the, all these different spaces that we're building are going to be utilized, kind of, I guess, more to their full potential? Obviously, the amphitheater, you'll be able to walk around there when no one else is there, but, I mean, will that be, like, do we rent that space? Will it be a revenue source for the city? Mr. Weber brought up a good point. I'm really concerned about how much money and infrastructure we actually put on that side, like, down by the river. I mean, the more we build, we're going to have to clean it up every spring. I mean, how much is the upkeep going to be for all of these different sections? How long is this stuff going to, I mean, how many years of flooding is this stuff going to take before we have to rebuild or redo it or, you know, fix it? So, I guess those are just kind of some of my concerns. I think it looks really nice, but it floods every spring down there, or a majority of the time it does, so.
Yes, and it can flood more than just in the springtime, too. So, we have to be very cognizant of that, and working with Army Corps of Engineers, we would definitely work to make sure it's floodable and lower maintenance, et cetera. Yes, absolutely.
Lower maintenance.
And built at the higher levels for the structures that are there, at least. And in the past, we've been required to have to remove structures that are built, that are placed in there, so absolutely all of that.
Okay. And I for sure want to make sure that we keep the flood marker, that we have kind of that.
Obelisk, yep.
Yeah, I love that, so, thank you.
I think it was incorporated into all the designs.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
And whatever the city's share is, if it's, if it's large enough that it's required, would we be able to bond for something like this? And would that be a 20-year bond? What would our financing look like? We can't bond for something like this?
We don't have a revenue stream to support it.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, all things we'd have to work out. I don't have an answer for you tonight, but we definitely would need, you know, a security against the bond, so we'd need a revenue stream of some sort, so.
When you retire, you can, we can pledge your retirement to go out and bond. Ms. Parvy, what were you thinking that we would be using for the city's share? Were we going to be using flood protection funds or economic development funds?
At this point, we had talked.
It's totally up in the air, okay. All right.
I think, you know, the flood protection, some of these items that are coming forward, you know, from the detention ponds and the, those are all coming out of that flood protection Greenway Capital Fund. Also, we have the Riverside Pool.
$5 million pool?
Yeah, so we got to deal with that. So, though we've accumulated a nice nest egg, it, you know, it's 20-plus years that we have to do. I think the other thing you could take a look at is, we do have some, how did we fund the original Greenway? And I think it was, I'm sure, a variety of ways of, you know, we probably don't want to do a citywide special assessment, but, you know, it's use tax and then some of the current sales taxes that we have that helped support the flood protection project. Obviously, there's lots of demands from streets to this, to that, but that's why we have to come back with a reasonable plan. And though the park district helped with operating some of this, they didn't invest a lot of capital in it, just because they're limited with, you know, mill levies. And so, likely, you know, the upfront cost would be on the city, and maybe we can get them to help support some of the smaller features and maybe the operating of it.
Maybe the airport could kick in some money. Thank you, Ms. Parvy. What do you need from us? Any, do you need a thumbs up to move forward, or?
That'd be great, yeah. I think we'll just continue to work on it and bring back more information.
I think we would all enjoy a nice update to the Greenway. I think we should note that we're down to three council members, so I'm not sure we can take any official action. So, I think we should still hear about the mayor's air service expansion committee update. Mr. Phelan, good evening.
Council President Sandy, members of the committee whole. Well, this is a, I'm really thankful that we're at this point because we got a challenging way forward, and so this is one of the mayor's priorities as we move forward on this issue. And the one thing about the mayor is that he wants to seek action and doesn't necessarily want to admire a challenge that we have nor critique the issue, but let's move forward with further action. So, in that spirit, that's what we're here for. And then again, and I think we've said this multiple times, without the city of Grand Forks doing this, well, there's nobody else coming out of the locker room that's going to move it forward, so that's why we're here. And so, I'm really grateful that the mayor is moving this forward. I think it's really timely. Every meeting that we've been at regarding the economic development, the airport comes up. It comes up from a service, from a cost, to, hey, that's hampering my business. So, we've heard that over and over again. So, it's only been validated when we've gotten out to seek input, and most of the input, we saw it, we haven't even asked about this, but it's come forward to us. So, with that, I also want to recognize Ryan Resinger's here from the Grand Forks Airport Authority, and then also Keith Lund from our Grand Forks Region EDC. And so, some of the information that I have in the staff report came from two meetings, from two of the mayor's air service committee meetings. And then also, I'm thankful to Mr. Resinger, who helped me with the previous RFQ that has some of this terminology in there that is not, does not roll off the tip of my tongue. So, some of that stuff has come from him for some of the technical information. Really, the committee has been focused on, we need to allocate appropriate resources to get to some further action. And number two, it's really involving a lot of business and community commitments to move this initiative forward. We've gotten this committee that's really engaged, energetic, and they're all in on moving this forward, so you should know that. One of the challenges that I think, some of the striking information is that we have a 53% leakage out of our catchment area. That's a challenge. Of that 36%, of that 53%, 36% goes to Fargo, and then 15% goes to Minneapolis-Staple Airport. The other challenge we have is with departures, and we've heard this, you know, we, our average is 3.58 departures daily. Bismarck's at 11, and Fargo's at 16.28. And it's not only where we are today, I think some of the concern is where we're going to be five, 10, 15 years from now, because that gap is widening. And the concern right now is we got to take, not only is the leakage could continue to grow, our service levels could continue to have gaps compared to our competitors. So, really, the time to do now, and I would say this is truly, I wrote in there, a vital and essential economic development priority, and I didn't really realize, I should have realized this, but it really is vital to our economic growth and vitality, and it's really come across as that. And it's something that I probably took for granted myself, but here we are. And I can't really think of right now anything that we're working on that's more vital right now. And if you've read the regional news, there's lots of gains and expansions in regional airports in and around us. And so, we've got to run much faster than we're running right now. And so, in that spirit, there was a SWOT analysis. We did our own informal SWOT analysis in there, and we have so many strengths that are going on in our community, from population growth, job growth, lots of economic vitality that we have in our committee, in our community. But we are a smaller regional entity compared to our, the Fargo-Moorhead that really has gained in regional capacity as we move forward. The challenge we have across the state of North Dakota is that we do not have a second air, commercial air carrier. Every other airport in North Dakota has one. That is not being federally subsidized, like in Devils Lake or Jamestown. But if you go from Dickinson to Williston to Minot to Grand Forks, Minot, or Minot and Bismarck and Fargo, everyone has a second, at least a second air carrier. We are without one, and we're out without a Western Route air carrier. So, we are an exclusive company, but not in great exclusive company at this point in time, sadly. We have such great announced job growth that, you know, I, that when we met with this community, whether it's Grand Forks Air Force Base with the Space Development Agency, whether it's the Test Resource Management and Grand Sky, whether it's Epitome Energy, whether it's LM Windpower, lots of companies are expanding in Grand Forks in our region. And one of the things that's come up in this committee is really the challenge of air service. It's limiting their ability to grow and move forward. Partly why we want to move forward with this RFQ is that there's going to be a small community service air, air service grant program. From what we know is, that's a USDOT program. Likely, it'll be announced for the 2025. So, we really need to get our story straight and moving forward in advance of that opportunity, and do a lot of proactive preliminary planning leading up to that. As was noted in earlier, the city of Grand Forks and the airport received one of these grants in the early 2010s with United. It only stuck around for about a year or two, and I would say overall was not successful. And partly, it wasn't successful as, maybe we didn't know some of the economic parameters and what we needed to do, and it didn't stick around for long enough. So, in this time, we really want sustainability. We want to demonstrate that we just don't want the grant, we'll see how it goes in a year, that we need to be all in as a community, and not just an airport authority, but we need to be in from our city of Grand Forks and our, in our region as we move forward. So, that's the paradigm shift. In this, in this way, the city of Grand Forks, on behalf of the greater Grand Forks community, is leading this to demonstrate the importance. And so, as opposed to leaning just on the airport authority that we did, you know, in that 2012 time period. So, this is a paradigm shift that we're, we are leading this. The RFQ kind of goes through various, various, you know, performance, you know, looking at our performance of where we're at, looking for opportunities of what we can do, looking for outreach, whether it's with airlines, whether it's at conferences, all of those. So, we need, number one, we need a consultant to help with putting our story together, and then having a firm that has outreach capability, has connections that can get us moving in the right direction with the right folks. And when I say the city of Grand Forks is certainly the spearhead of this, similar to what we were with the indoor sports and aquatic center on behalf of the greater community, we're the spear of this, but we're doing it on behalf of the greater community. There has been some studies at the Grand Forks Airport Authority done, looking at Chicago as a potential option, looking at Denver as potential options, and others have brought up in this Salt Lake City. So, there's lots of options, but we need an executional, an executable plan to move forward with and a really great story, because lots of, as we move forward in this vein. Similar to what I talked about with the water treatment plan RFQ, we would, we would like to get this out in February, likely be back here in April, May, with a firm, with a negotiated agreement, and with an action plan to move forward with. And probably Q1 2025, we should have done a lot of work. Work that we can embrace, we've done outreach, we've gotten our name out there, and ultimately, moving forward with a grant opportunity. So, this is not, we're going to fix this tomorrow. This is a long-term play that we move forward with. And one of the things that we're, you know, it's perhaps stunning, all the work we have to go, to move forward with of where we're at, and as you see the announcements, whether it's in Fargo or Bismarck, and where else around us. However, it should give us hope that we can move the needle. These other airports are doing it, these other communities are doing, that means we can do it, but we have to be really intentional, intentional and actionable in doing this. I, you know, just talking to the mayor, things that we've done as a community, as the city has led in the past, that have turned out better than we ever anticipated. I think of the Alara Center, how, where it's at today versus where it was in 2016. It's remarkable. You know, we went out for our requests for qualifications and proposals. We have a new firm that started. At the time, they were doing as Spectra, now they're OBG. But if you looked at the Alara Center in 2016 versus where it is in 2024, it's remarkably different. So, it tells you it can happen in a Grand Forks market, and in many ways, we're out competing the Fargo-Moorhead market for events. That's incredible. Nobody would have said that in 2016, so that gives me hope that we can do this. You look at all the great things we've done with downtown and UND redevelopments, nobody would have said that. You know, all the things that we've started in 2018 that are where we are today, nobody anticipated that we could do all those things and really have a vibrant UND, have a vibrant downtown Grand Forks, have a UND that's out competing NDSU for enrollment. That's an incredible story of what we can do. And finally, the Grand Forks Air Force Base in Grand Sky. So, in 2006, we were realigned, so we got bracked, but thankfully, we weren't at the C for closure, we were the R for realignment. And I think really at the time, we were realigned thanks to our congressional delegation, you know, Senator Dorgan and Conrad, because it was, they put us on life support. But we worked so hard and so actively to move forward, we became a success, we are the success story of realignment. Right now, with where we're at with both the Grand Forks Air Force Base and their mission sets, and also Grand Sky, nobody in 2006 would have thought where we are today. So, it tells you things can happen. We've done it. And I think our focus on behalf of the mayor has to be with the Grand Forks Airport and getting more service to our community, because we're losing, we're losing out on service times and availabilities, we're losing out on cost, and it's really happening in our business. What really struck me is Keith Lund aligned a meeting with his former, the former EDC director down in Fargo in the early 2000s, so the mayor and I were on it. It was a striking story, so you always think of Fargo where they are today from an airport perspective. You think to yourself, well, it always had to turn out that way. And the story was, it was intentional. It was a lot of hard work to get them there. And what happened is there, the, he was describing the EDC director of what he was at the time, along with the airport authority director, who I think is still there today, they teamed up on this, because it was a critical need in their community. Where did they hear that from? They heard it from companies in their community that were doing business around the world. And so, I won't name those companies, but those are the businesses. And what they were telling Fargo is that we can't grow and expand in Grand Forks, or in Fargo, without better airport service, because otherwise, it's going to go to a different community. And so, they got on it right away. And obviously, it was, as I said, more private sector-led in Fargo. In our case, in, we're the city of Grand Forks, and whomever the mayor was in Fargo, we're more of a, more of the behind-the-scenes, yes, we're all for that as a city, we want to support that, support this as we move forward. But it tells you again, another story, sadly, that was back in the early 2000s when they described, and now we're in 2024, but it tells you another story. It can be done, but we got to start now, and we got to, we got to run as fast as we can. So, we're trying to find a consultant that can independently come in here and tell us, here's where our, do their own analysis on us of where we need to get to, how we can get there, based upon who we are in Grand Forks with all the comparables that we have. So, that's where we'd like to move forward today and request you to, you can, you can do a motion, but that, coming on next Tuesday, that's really what we think. I can't think of a higher priority right now in our community from a business and community development perspective than this issue that we have with air service. So, with that, the mayor's here too, and I'm thankful that he moved forward with one more initiative that we can move forward. But for right now, you know, the EDC's been the partner on this with the city. This is kind of a transition where the city is going to take the leadership, because we're planning to use Fund 2163, which is the city's economic development fund, to move forward with this, with hiring a consultant to move forward with an action plan. Number two, that small airport grant is going to require a local match, and that would be another funding source. So, we're going to, the fund is going to be hit up in two different ways as we move forward, at least over this first year and a half. And then maybe once we get to the end of 2025, we can decide where do we need to go from here with the consultant and the action plan from there. Thank you, President Sandy.
Mr. Phelan, thank you for all that great information. Appreciate it. So, we can't really take any official action, but I think we should move forward with the consultant. What do you guys think?
I agree.
Great.
I think I was, the Greenway stuff is fun.
Mm-hmm.
This is.
This is actually really important.
This is really important.
Yeah.
And we're losing. And we're losing over 50% from our catchment area. People who should be flying out of JFK are going elsewhere right now. And I get the sense that a lot of times, people are going online and finding a ticket that's $75 cheaper and flying somewhere else, when in fact, the numbers show, if it's anything less than a $200 savings, they're actually costing themselves money with the gas, the extra parking, it's more expensive in other places. This is so important across the board.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yeah, I assume that part of this is going to be trying to figure out how to keep some of that 53%. If we keep, if we manage to keep half of that, we'd be in, we'd be in really good shape.
Could we just quit training so many pilots until the airline industry says they?
Well, that's the problem, right? They've, they've gone to bigger airplanes because there are fewer pilots, so they're using bigger airplanes, which is why we have about the same number of seats in and out of Grand Forks, but only three flights instead of the five or six that we had pre-COVID, so, which makes it very difficult. You either have to be on the 5:00 AM flight to get anywhere during the day, or if you're wanting to get home, you're getting home at midnight, and that's just the way it works.
And the layovers are.
The schedule is really terrible.
It's a horrible schedule.
It is, it's terrible.
The last three flights I took, I flew out of Fargo.
I think, but ultimately, it's going to take commitment of our community to use our airport. We need the businesses, the business owners, the governments in our community committing to use our airport. I think that's, I think that's essential if we're going to move the bar. What more do you need from us, Todd?
I think we heard it, unless the mayor has any final words on his thought. We'll bring it on Tuesday, hopefully with Move Forward.
Tuesday.
Next week. President's Day on Monday.
Tuesday. Thank you for everyone.
Right.
Tuesday. Okay, well, we can't officially make a motion to adjourn, so let's call it a night, everybody. Thanks for coming out.
Mayor, did you?
Mayor, did you want to say something? Yeah, after you, sir.
Todd painted a pretty sad story, so I guess I'd like to end on a positive note. I mean, if you look at what's going on in the community with Grand Sky, the base, Altru, the Alara Center, UND, we're firing on all cylinders. I think it's phenomenal. I think this effort is to get the airport up to that and to move forward, and I'm excited about it, and I think we're in the right direction, so that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks for your leadership. So we can't adjourn the meeting?
No, we have to stay forever. Everybody, have a good night. Thanks for coming.